Hey everybody, welcome back to the YouTube channel Living the Country Life with Thomas Collins. This is part three of the seven eleven twenty twenty-three Town Hall Meeting Otter Creek, Florida. Let's get started.
These new pumps are pulling, I mean, it's like they're in a vacuum, they're sucking the water out of that tank. Have you ever seen in a pool by the drain, the whirlpool is sucking air through there? So it's getting air through that. And we're not certain that how much air is coming from there, not certain how much. There's a couple leaks in line, it could be some of those. If we're placing that line and get it reset up and get that leak fixed and get the pumps lower, so they're at least to the bottom of the tank level, so it gives us a little bit more gap tissue level. The other side of this is the head pressure is so high on the pumps that the pumps themselves are separating the air out of the water. It's running so hard because when it runs, the system pushing it against the filter system is only allowed to take thirty-five gallons a minute, and the pumps are pumping fifty-five gallons a minute. So it's gaining twenty gallons a minute. And you know, it don't take me twenty minutes, now you're sitting there at a hundred PSI or more, and that pump's sitting here deadheading, you know, because it's just seeping past at this point. It's creating its own separation inside the pump, separating the air and the airs. Your pumps are running dry because the air, you know, it's getting the air in and that's what's running in the pumps. It's been three pumps now, is that right? Two pumps, one was repaired already? And both of those ones are in the shop, right?
Well, I've heard that pump's under warranty, but Barney's pumps comes four times. They did not tell us that. We have a professional, nature coast utility installed that pumps. He would do pumps up to a hundred horse. And Barney's pumps come and looked at it, and if there was a problem, they should have told us and gone with it. Instead of letting the pump park in that area.
Well, I kind of, I kind of went at them about that, because I felt that same way. But their interpretation is that they sell pumps, they don't design systems. And that's kind of how they get fallen back on that.
Their, their Barney's pump guy from Jacksonville and Mr. Badger, which was part of our solutions, got together, and they're the ones that come up with those pumps. Barney's pump wasn't involved with that.
Well, I'm not doubting, now, now it's just everybody's trying to backtrack and get themselves out of it, that's all that's happening.
They're trying to get out of warranty.
Definitely, definitely, I'm out of warranty, I'm saying that is definitely not happening. But, um, the the system, even, we need to put a variable speed control on it that works off of the pressure, so that it slows itself down automatically, which is about five or six thousand dollars for one of those. And then you've got to have a pressure sensor inline, and you still have to have a diaphragm system for it to give, so that pressure, the fluctuation in the system is not so dramatic when it, when it changes over, when it slows down, you've got to have the back pressure so that it keeps the pressure consistent through the system. But, but all this stuff, high tech, we can make it, it can only pump a thousand gallons, and it's got to stop. Because that's all the system can produce in the water. Because it'll suck it out of there, it's gone, so it's got to shut down and wait for the filter system to catch back up and then do it again. So every time we call for water over here, I'm guessing that demand's about, what, two thousand, three thousand gallons below that it puts on?
Two thousand.
Three thousand? So when it calls for demand, these three thousand gallons of water, we can only send it a thousand gallons, it'll kind of stop, make the filter system catch back up. And, and, and on grant you, everyone can vouch, this, this system that we're waiting on is ancient, it's eighty years old, or seventy-five years old. And the, the iron side of this system is, it, it's falling apart. I mean, it's rusty, it gets so bad inside of it, it's falling up and falling up and falling up. We're only going to be able to beat that loose end there so, so, so long before it busts something inside of it. And we're going to sit here with no, we're drinking the water out of the creek. And that's where it's going to come from, that's, uh, well, that system, it may be all antiquated, but it does do it, it does work, it's just slow. But it is, today's scanners is way different than that now. So we've definitely got to look at working on the iron filters, getting that correct, because we're fixing this stuff without it. I know that's, it's been opened up multiple times and fixed and unblogged inside of it. It's gotten down now, you, you have to go down that pipe, and you can only get something in there so high. You can only go down about four feet inside that shaft going down to clear it. And we're, we're at the maximum depth to go down to clear it now, from what we can get in there, you've got to take the whole thing apart. If you take the whole thing apart, I'll assure you, you won't get it back to that. So that is something we're going to have to look into, continue on with the water system. But hopefully, next month, we'll get some good news back on the water line system, when that's coming through, or estimated time. So we can see what we need to do. We don't want to spend lots of money fixing over and picking it, if it's less than a year. Supposedly the money is never paid for it. But getting it all organized and coordinated is something else. It's a big adventure, it's not just us, it's all the CQs, all the EUs. Yeah, that's, I think it was about seventy miles of pipeline. Of water, and seventy miles line of suits return line. The good thing is, is when that water comes on, goes on board, gives us a place to build a lift station, and we just send suits back. That was, the water management people are, I guess, who started it.
Water management.
And especially including these, hopefully, I expect early by the end of the year. I know that we're, I'm saying we've got to fix these things, but I'm thinking we need to use timeframe before we start spending money on it. And, and these pumps, maybe we might just have to pass this thing through, just so we can make a built-out system work. Because here's what we're facing with them, they're not threatening it, but in here, you tell them, they've got a lot of money invested in that, and they can't profit it. And the town is obligated, ourselves, for them to invest that money, we have to provide them the water for it to work. Otherwise, we're liable for their losses. And so we need to get that back online. Try to minimize expenses. Basically, next month, we should be able to decide if we're going to do a long-term thing or a short-term thing with the pipeline. And if we're going to, if it is short-term, just, just pass this thing through just enough to get these guys satisfied, so they're not seeing this before this line comes through. Because once the line comes through, the problem, I believe, their system might. And this was all after the pipeline. And that's, no one's fault to pass that was pursuing this, because pipeline thing came in after that was pursued.
Okay, for new business, we need to change the signers on our CPOST accounts. Going through the office, we found out there's some CPOST accounts, but we don't know. They won't tell us at the bank how many there are, what there are. So we have to do just like the last time and sign to remove the previous signers and put new signers for CPOST.
Linda has information for that gentleman about his water.
Oh, okay.
The office has fixed Mr. McMill's water bill to remove the sixty-eight hundred dollars that was on there prior, prior. So I have a current new bill for him. If he will send me before he leaves, I'll give you.
If you want that to see her before you leave, she'll give you the paperwork.
I will.
That was easy.
All right, the next thing we have is the water rate ordinance, which would be resolution number twenty twenty-three two, which you should all have in your packets. So it's a resolution of the town of Otter Creek in Leana County, Florida, establishing revised water rates and related charges and administrative parameters, including hardship relief superseding prior resolutions and providing an effective date. Do I need to read the whole thing, Mr. Moore?
Do we need to read this resolution entirely? Do we need to read it?
I'd read it by title as long as it's available, the council members.
I just did. Okay, so if you all want to look that over, you have to log in.
Just want to log up this evening.
Yes. So come and look that over, take your time and look it over.
Laura, what's changing in the ordinance?
Because the last one was done for meter size, which, from what I've seen, there's only one different meter size, but the billing in there wasn't even being done by meter size. It was being done by a commercial residential breakdown. And the commercial residential breakdown didn't even reflect the meter size that the ordinance stated. And four different people were getting charged the commercial rate, which was based on a one-inch meter size. And as I was told, the different people had a five-eighths size, which is what they had categorized as the residential, so none of it lined up.
It's a business, it makes the commercial right. Faro Rule Water, Water, a rate study. And they're the ones recommending the way that we have that out of ordinance right up.
So why wasn't the billing reflecting what the ordinance was?
Building, or whatever size meter was.
And where's the study that was done?
And, and the record's in there.
Want to say record?
I'm sure if you'll get Faro Rule Water, they'll get a copy of what they did. And that was based on just enough to keep this water system going. And make a, uh, the biggest, which is supposed to have. I suggest that you call them and talk to them before you change the ordinance.
I think the ordinance is just reflecting that residential pre-charge, this residential commercial.
It's just all one phrase, and I was never advised about the study being done. I mean, didn't Mr. Wong know about this study?
Mr. Moore, Mr. Wong has done the, uh, the last ordinance, uh, resolution that we changed.
Changed order on the recommendation of, of, of something. But I didn't have the study first day, and I really don't know what the study said.
And we can't find it yet.
I would suggest, so if there is a study that is inconsistent, or it's being proposed now, and it makes some sense, it comes from an authoritative source, it ought to be consulted, and you probably ought to table this resolution until you check out what the study is, and then see if it changes your consideration. So if you only think it makes sense, I think.
Okay, so.
I believe this, this study was done back when we, it went from two thousand, four thousand, two dollars to down, wasn't it? I think it was based on.
Yes, it went from four to five.
Right, that was finally based on that.
So we want to table that for now.
Uh, just to be clear, from my perspective, I don't see anything wrong with this, the resolution that's in front of you now. But if it isn't consistent with, with some, uh, formal study, that's good. Then I think it pays to look at that study and, and, uh, just analyze the logic of that.
Well, I would agree, that's why I did ask ahead of time. Right, that's why I did ask ahead of time for weeks.
I think you put it.
Okay, so we'll table that for now and look up the study to find out that information. And under other new business, Fox and Mid Tower will be attending the August meeting to discuss our grants and explain to everybody what our grants are. They'll explain the, what we have left, what it can be used for. They'll explain all the technical sides, so whoever attends the meeting, if you have any questions about the grants, I would have them prepared ahead of time, because they're very knowledgeable and can answer all your questions, so we'll know everything there is to know about the grants. So just to let you know, a heads up to get your questions ready for them, they'll be at the August meeting. And the next thing we have under new business is our library and the use of the library. So I have not seen anybody use this library. And there's boxes of books sitting in the other building and in the other room. So I think we need to reevaluate the use of the library, whether we want to keep it, if we do keep it, downsizing it, because there's too many books here, there's too many books sitting in boxes in the other room. And it's fine if we want to keep the library, but I think it might be a good idea to discuss downsizing it.
I'll make a motion we downsize it, you know what I mean, nobody's using the library.
Is that because it's been locked up?
And have somebody make it available. Like the Gup Hammock, on the side of the road.
I'll take the motion to downsize it. Let's, let's, but before we dispose of anything, at least offer out to people in town.
Yeah, absolutely.
That they have kids or grandkids, or someone, they want some of these things, that they can come in and take those for that use of.
Yeah, any, yeah, any of the books, movies, well, the citizens will have first pick, we're not just going to throw them in the trash. But there is just too much, and we need to downsize it, not get rid of it, but downsize it and make better use of the space, and the stuff sitting in boxes is not even able to get used. So.
Donate some of them to the school. Donating some of them to the school.
Yeah, after the citizens go through them and take what they want, we'll get in touch with schools to donate them, or see if the library or the county wants them, so.
One library, they provide an internet service.
Right.
I think we're going to be able to provide that, such as downsizing.
Yeah, that's definitely something we can look into more when getting prices for the internet.
I think we should include that.
Yeah, it's definitely something to look at, and I will.
There's more libraries, like really a ton of them.
Right, and that's originally what that second line was supposed to be, but for some reason, they, I don't, I can't.
I can't explain it.
I can't explain that, but yeah, when I, when I check the prices, I'll check on that as well. Right.
The town needs it, there's people here in Camp Ford, and they need to have a question with it.
Okay, so we have a motion to downsize, was there a second to that? All in favor?
I'll go along with that.
Okay, unanimous. Okay, another thing that a lot of people have been talking about is having a volunteer day to clean up in the future. I don't know if anyone wants to discuss, I would recommend doing that in a month that's a little cooler. But I think we should start talking about that and planning that for the future. So if there's anybody that would like to sign up to be a volunteer, or anyone that would sign up to, they want their yard cut, or they need help doing anything, they can come to the Town Hall and discuss getting help or being helped, and we'll go and talk about doing that in probably a couple of months, I guess, while we're moving.
Yeah, basically, the two lists, a list of people who want to volunteer their time and services, you know, a list of people who need services provided in the town of Camp Ford, or need help, or can't physically do, need help with anything. I hope we can have those sides working together and maybe create some more bond and trust and everything.
Maybe a list of resources too.
You need to put down that list. You need to put down that list.
I think if we run in a dumpster, like for a week or so, as a bulk disposal area.
Yeah.
If they're currently, because.
Well, yeah.
You know, for a week, seven days or something, so people can bring the stuff that they normally can't dispose of.
Just for Otter Creek.
Actually, we should take that time to plan and do this.
Those aren't mine, Mr. Hale. Now, I have been guilty myself of throwing food on Dead Dog Road. Because that's what we've always done, you know what I mean? And Gup Hammock Hunting Club and Flat Branch Hunt Club come from the woods, that's the only way to get in and out, not just go into Gup Hammock. They come from out in the woods, take a right, get a bit of all their trash on Dead Dog Road, hit the other road over there, and then head out of town.
I personally don't even know why that is a road.
I don't know, we've, we've done cleaned it up since the five years that I've been banking Otter Creek, have we not?
Yes, it's been cleaned up sure more than once.
They promise they keep something there.
Bill, I have to ask you. Didn't I ask you where the road was?
Yes, you asked me where the road was, and I told you, but yes.
It would be nice if, you know.
Now, I have been guilty of throwing old food out of the creek.
Because that road does go through the timber farm.
The problem with all the dumpsters is that the expense of the dumpster, if people throw the wrong things in there, that dumpster fee goes from five hundred dollars to two thousand dollars, or five hundred.
Money in my pain and tires.
And you know that it's happened, and, you know.
Well, also, we had a successor.
Well, the, the need, that need to be combined with the cleanup, so that if someone's there, when, while we're all doing some of the great stuff to get it thrown in, and then it goes home, it's like.
It'd be a limited time, you can't pay all the time to be out there.
We'll have a few mics to plan it and get, what would be, we'll get prices on that, and other people do have trailers, but if people come together, we can get some stuff done.
So can we use that with the road before hunting starts?
I'll try to get in touch with the timber company and, I mean, that would be ideal, if they live a defense on those sides.
Forty-four years, haven't moved, I'm proud of you, Russell. You always stand up and say, shut up, Sam.
That's not.
Okay. Okay, so if anybody would like to be a volunteer, or would like to have things done at their property, please get in touch with us, you can call us, you can email us, and we'll be setting that up for the future in the next couple of months. So to get that rolling, you can get in touch with us and let us know what you would like, or any ideas for that, and we'll be talking about that more in the future.
Any comments, chief?
Hopefully, we can get that webpage set up and interact that right through yet.
Yeah, that would be things a lot easier.
You see the, the decks coming up on that, and the register on that eventually. For both, for services and to provide services.
All right, since we have a lot to go through, I'm going to try to go through a few things a little faster. Just for everyone to know, if you want to sign up to get your water bill emailed, please get in touch with us and give us an email address. You'll get your bill faster, and it saves on postage and ink and paper and all that stuff. So get in touch with us and give us your email address. The next thing that I wanted to talk about with Sam's Club, we have an account with the, well, I assumed it was with the town, but I'm finding out that it's under Mary's personal debit card with the town's ID, tax ID tied to it. I don't know if that's been going on the whole time.
Do we have any invoices from Sam's?
They sent an email saying your account has been renewed, so I went down to Sam's to ask them about the account, and they said that our tax ID is tied to her personal account.
So she just has the payment taxes and stuff.
Correct. So, I don't. Just wanted to give you updated. Now, the next thing. The water bills, we've now put the breakdown on the water bills, and we've looked into doing the online payment. They can set it up for two hundred fifty dollars a year, we still need to get in touch with the bank and see if there's an additional charge for that. So we're still talking about that, but we'll revisit it when we get the final pricing and see if everybody wants to move forward with doing online payments. The lake fees have been reinstated, because we had waived them that one month while everything was airing. So just to let you know, we'll be back revisiting after we talk to the bank. But they are capable of doing the online payments with the software we have, so that is something we can have in the future. Also, going through paperwork, we found out that there was a town cellphone that's missing. I don't know where that went, it was an Apple iPhone seven that was purchased at the end of twenty nineteen. I would have thought with all this equipment we had in here, that that would still be here, but it's missing. If anybody knows who has this phone, the number's nine four nine three eight eight one, they're in possession of a stolen cellphone, so you might want to let them know.
So it was an Apple?
Yeah, it's an Apple iPhone seven.
Is it active?
When I tried to call. Well, not that we're paying for it, but it is still on.
Do you do a locator thing?
I have not, there's been too much to do.
They ask you to activate the phone before you.
We do also have some loss of revenue from the twenty twenty-one audit was never uploaded. I don't know why it wasn't ever uploaded, but I guess the clerk was supposed to get back with the CPA to let them know after they presented it to the board to upload it. And unfortunately, even in emails and letters she received, she never called them back. So we did lose on some of our revenues. I called them, it's been reinstated, so our future revenues will be good. There was also discrepancies in that audit. The annual financial report needs to be corrected within thirty days, or we will be losing more revenues and withholding funds. So just when I was talking about how important it is to have the clerk and all these serious deadlines that we are under, because the ball was dropped, we have that that needs to be done in thirty days, and it's kind of hard when the bank accounts have not been reconciled for several years. So there's a lot of discrepancies, there's things missing, it's been a task. So it's very important that we have a clerk, there's a lot of things that are all due at the same time. You have upcoming trim, the budget. Last year, the trim wasn't submitted. So we're, got a hand slap for that, and we're told in a letter that was sent out and ignored, that it'll be fine for that time, but anything coming up this year, we will be fine for if there's any mistakes. And unfortunately, another thing that I don't understand, coming into this town, there's no calendars with deadlines wrote. where if you have an established business, town, whatever, all these things should be put in place so that people can come in and get the things done. I've never worked anywhere that doesn't have an SOP for everything done. And it's just like walking into a mess of somebody who.